Please silence or shut off your cell phones if you would and join us in the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. So we do have an addition. The recommendations concrete backup generator and the deletions IGA disputes county. Is there any other additions or deletions?
That's all of them.
That's all of them. Okay. Jake, you're needing to do yours right off probably from our agenda here. Would you like to do yours very first thing?
Sure.
Okay, we're going to very, and we'll start off the, I believe, the youth investment coordinators.
Yeah, just to, wanted to just a brief introduction of Board of the Street, guys are all aware. About a month ago or so, we interviewed for youth investment coordinator because Mike Patterson returned to law enforcement. Through the course of our interviews, Mr. Nickel, Jim, excuse me, rose to the level that we offered him the position he accepted. Jim comes to us from the high school where he taught for many years. He's been in education. He, I'll let him explain, but I just wanted to formally introduce you to the board.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. I'm explaining. Yeah, so anyway, really excited to be, you know, involved here in the county and to continue to work with you as I've done for a lot of years. So thrilled to be on board and look forward to contributing any way I can to the juvenile program downstairs.
Building out of each of them.
Thank you.
Happy to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if you're in a position that can have a huge impact on the pre-judiced kids and make a big difference with a lot of families. So thank you for coming on board.
Yeah, hope that's the case. Thank you.
All right.
Good.
We're going to get back on our agenda. Dave Knowles changing. This is on the taxes. Paying protocol.
So I sent you folks an email out back on June 6th and our office printed the link on tax notice that we sent out. And out of that, we sent 497 tax notices worth $5. And I got the looking at the cost of what we're doing and what we were gaining. Those 497 notices netted an income of $1,251. And the cost to generate them with the postings and the envelopes and the labor to generate them. And also the cost to posting and those pigments, which would be an additional $500 payments, runs close to $1100. And because we have to disperse 100% of taxes, it's a burden to our office and a burden to the county. So by Oregon statute, 311 795, and our current protocol is right now, we have no way to prepay tax. So when someone pays taxes, we only bank the current year. And if the check is accurately made and it is less than $10, $10 or less, you do not write refund. You go ahead and you should put that in the general fund. So, and that's by statute. Same token, the same statute says you can write off up to that amount for insufficient payment. So typically where the problem comes in is if a taxpayer is having trouble making their payment in a timely fashion. And they finally get the revenue together to make that payment, they may make that payment off of a dated statement. And interest is accrued at the 15th of every month. So instead of $200 worth of taxes, you make the payment off a statement that they're aware of that they think they're paying them full. And actually, it comes into Lincoln and it accrues a 16, or interest rate of 16% by statute. And it accrues a little bit of interest. So they're unaware that their tax is not paid full. And then when they get the still Lincoln notice, then that generates an unhappy taxpayer and they got, we generated his tax bill for almost a dollar or two. Instead, and they gotta go with, come true anyway. So instead of going to the $10 write-off, I'm recommending a $5 write-off. Our current protocol right now is a $1 write-off. So we're writing off $1 if the payment is short in a dollar or less. But yet we're taking an overpayment up to $10. So to kind of balance that out, that's what I'm recommending we can do.
So your recommendation is even less than what the state corrects?
And what I did is I called other counties to kind of see what was going on in the neighborhood. And most all the other counties are doing a $5 write-off, like what I'm proposing. Harley County is doing a $2 write-off and then Ted said, well, possibly, he said, he may have to want to bump that. It's just an accounting nightmare and sometimes it makes for happier taxpayers. Also bounce this off of the income rate. And it has no financial impact to the county as far as losing money or gaining money. But the losers would be the taxing districts, which would be small miles of interest is what that would be. But actually, the interest goes to the state, to the taxing district. So anyway, that's my recommendation.
Okay, we'll act on it tomorrow. Thank you. Was there other questions? I'm sorry.
No, I think Dave did a great job explaining that.
Next one, Dave, you have, let me see here. Lane County.
So as everyone knows, we do not have an in-house GIS mapping service and we've been contracting. Lane County's been providing us this service for almost over 10 years and they can do a great job for us. And we left the state of Oregon to Lane County because the state's service was taking three to six months to get work done. And it was inaccurate and had any problems and logistics were terrible. Lane County saw the need and they started helping the small counties. They helped six small counties currently. They've had a lot of in-house changing of staff. They've lost some photographers. They decided not to keep participating in helping small counties with their mapping. So on June 6th, they called us a meeting, the order of a thorn, and said that they were gonna stop service as of June 3rd, which is like a pretty weak lead. There were some options to go different directions and we're going, I chose to go with the shoots county and they chose to accept us. We're the only small county that are helping besides ourselves. They have four full-time photographers. We have a big relationship with them and their legal department's working on IGA currently. You could probably see at the next meeting. And it looks like it'll be a notable increase of cost to us. There might be a setup cost at the beginning because they have to set up a computer and a server to house our information separately from theirs. But anyway, this what's before you today is just an amendment. And it's pretty clever. It said, Lane and Lake County agree to terminate mapping maintenance services for Lake County's defined as of June 3rd. And so basically, we're a five-hour contract with them. We're gonna remain our GIS mapping service for our internet base for the webpage and so on. And it's a good possibility later on, the shoots will gear up and pick that up also. It'd be a one-stop shop. For right now, they're not set up for it. We're gonna continue with the original IGA. It'll sign in May 16th of 2018. With Lane County. So that's still in practice just in the middle. So this is also a pretty simple copy of that form.
Questions?
So I guess you've been in communication with the shoots even just yesterday and they've received?
So correct. I don't like to get the cart before the horse. So I try not to have them give any of our data or information or start any of our work until we have an IGA in place. Just to make sure everybody had the, was on the same page and no one was being misled. However, their, Lane County's photographer was leaving last week and he had all the data. We worked with the shoots photographer and they did transfer and send the files and the data to them. And they're storing it currently there. I reached out to our whole IT department thinking was we were gonna house it here temporarily till we got going. They went ahead and did that themselves. And we still have it at Lane County. So the parents didn't want that to be corrupted.
Sure.
Drops on my line.
But they think it looks pretty promising as far as?
Yeah, and the conversation we had yesterday is moving forward. It's in legal counsel right now to do IGA. We worked out enough some bolts to make it work.
Awesome.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you.
All righty.
Thanks, Dave.
You guys had a great day.
Jake, who are you? Constitution, Lake County.
My name is James. What's for you today is the, our, my understanding with kind of county. For the use of their detention, we historically have granted 220 bed days a year, which we've wasted about 55 bed days a quarter. And some quarters, you know, excuse me, some quarters we don't use any, but we still pay. And that's just our guarantee that we have a bed. Some quarters we use more than one. Currently, we have one individual detention. He's been there for some time. And we go to court again on the ninth next Monday. He's only been there for four weeks. Nevertheless, the cost, I've got Mr. Bolden, Juvenile, End Director of the Juvenile Department. Has been a joy to work with, both personally and professionally. So our cost to them is $24,000 to $200.
Pretty fortunate to stay in the same, not doing that.
Yeah. I don't foresee it. One of them went up a couple of years ago from about $85 a day to under $10 a day. But that was due to rising costs of doing business and we haven't had an increase, I would say, about seven years prior to, seven years.
Prior to the last increase, prior to the last increase?
Yeah, it's about seven years. So I go with the cost of doing business.
Yep.
Appreciate the charitable detention. So I think it's low risk, but it's always cheaper to supervise the community. Unfortunately, you need to see detention as you're on juvenile, it's controlled, things, insurance and all. So.
All right. Other questions? We'll act on it tomorrow. Thank you.
And then just one reminder, July 25th, the week of July 25th is our national P and P probation period. Appreciate you coming, Thursday to 25th, noon by 11:15, we'll be having much of a memorial hall. Directly as part of our supervision staff and then we'll get off about 12:15, 12:30, as soon as our desk is ready.
That's a dollar to him.
Thank you. Mr. Berman, ground lease is our next item. And if you'd rather do the key hanger.
Another is a ground lease for him.
Welcome, Dave.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have a, Chuck Kelly is a, or is going to build a new hangar out there. So we need to come to ground lease for him to be able to build that. It helps us with this, which is in front of you. Bailey's looked at it. Chuck and I went through it. Negotiated what he felt is comfortable with it and in the county as long as Bailey said everything comes up. So I just need to get that approved and move forward.
Very good. It's basically, basically our standard ground lease. You able to work with Chuck a little bit on individual things. And so we can, he'll bring this forward tomorrow to be signed and taken care of. Chuck, thank you for picking Lake County Airport to put a hangar in out there. Appreciate it very much.
You're the only one close by.
Well, we're seeing a lot of improvements out there and whenever locals invest in that, we appreciate it very much. Thank you.
So do you have any questions for us, Chuck? Where?
I don't. I gotta visit with Tom and see what you're gonna do when you overlay. To get elevations right.
So is this a little time sensitive? Or is tomorrow okay? Or do you need us taken care of?
Tomorrow's fine.
Okay. All right. Very good. We'll act on it tomorrow. Thanks again.
And then Tom and I, I'll kind of let Tom hit on this as well. We've got T-hangers out there and come to find out through just making improvements out there. There's no T-hanger leases for any of the T-hanger. So Tom and I have been working on this for probably the last six months. We need to get T-hanger leases and get them to the people that lease them.
Well, for everybody's liability, I really appreciate both of you guys seeing this needs to be cleaned up. There's liability both ways there, whether it's us or the people in the T-hangers. For the worst-case scenario, then get this cleaned up and taken care of. Appreciate that very much. You guys caught that. I had no idea that they went there.
Well, the people that were in, Tom and I, we sort of didn't, we kind of took, we kind of came into a maintenance issue. So I was like, Tom, can you get the lease for the T-hangers? We kind of, he's going, I don't have them here. There's never, never had them there. So I looked in my file. So we just, it just never, because they rented, they.
You mean it's not 1960 any variety? So, you know, so Tom and I got together.
What also, what this does too, by having this agreement, where we're on a five-year plan with the FAA for grants to bring the rental levels up to where they're, they're the federal recommendation levels. This gives us a base to be able to do that and make sure that everybody's getting treated fairly. People out there that are renting right now will have a chance to review it. And then eventually, I'd like to see, even in our budget, we'll have a separate line item for that rental money. So that there is actual money set aside to maintain something out there. Because as of now, that money just, there's not money to maintain those, those hangers. So. And that's been a question a couple of times is, you know, hey, if we're paying the rent, you know, how are we getting this stuff taken care of? So at least if we've set aside money for that, then we've got something to start improving these things.
So I didn't, I just thought of this. Is there an insurance requirement written into this that the people leasing have to carry insurance? I mean, the T-hanger, one of them set it afire and wipes them all out. I would think there would need to be insurance that covers.
Correct. Yeah, and it's been long enough now that I.
Well, I usually read them really close.
I know we do listen to that, but I didn't look at the version yet. So.
It talks about hold harmless, but I don't see the insurance side of it or what the standard part of that is, guys.
Right, we'll get that in there because I agree if it does need to be in there.
Yeah, and we've been requiring that anyhow as far as, you know, in each of the individuals' files, they have an insurance policy to cover.
Just take a look if we need to put anything in there, work with legal counsel. You can have it in by tomorrow if we need to. If it's, if it's covered, then it's covered. Which is something that came to mind. I guess I asked all these questions before the meeting, but it just sort of hit me all of a sudden. If you would check on that, make sure it's covered.
It's not there, we'll definitely add to it.
Yep. Other questions?
Nope.
That's good.
And a little update on my comments here about the Connect project.
Oh, absolutely.
It got postponed back a lot due to the contractors that we were, they do. They ran into an issue where they couldn't get here on their deadline if they gave us July 7th or July 8th. So they pushed it out a month. So July, or August 8th, they'll be here and they'll stop letting you down with that. April and all paid.
Very good. And then what's our completion?
Six weeks, they said.
Yeah, we stressed, that's why it begins with our weather and stuff.
We bothered it first. We were hampered by it. We can't go get another contractor now, you know, from this business. We're kind of at their mercy. So.
Okay. All right.
Sounds good.
All right.
I would like to come out there one of these days, here real shortly though, and kind of go over the airport with you guys. Because I just, just familiarize myself a little bit better with Master Plan and get a idea of all the different things you guys are working on out there. So that'd be awesome.
Yeah, please do. Dave's got a copy of that Master Plan sitting here as well. So.
Yeah, I know. We've been discussing, trying to go out there one of these days and it hasn't yet. So, cool.
Well, I guess I could add, the solar, solar projects moving right along right now. It's looking good. They're already driving post to the ground and it's looking, looking good. So.
Very good. Very good.
Yeah.
All right.
You're good. Thanks.
Thanks, Tom. Dave, you can do your addition, the concrete backup generator addition.
Yeah, all of our backup generator stuff is here. So we need to do the follow-up in far as the concrete that we're setting. I ran out of bids, estimates.
Thank you, Chuck.
I contacted three contractors. Only got one bid from this one. So we only have the one bid to compare. Give us all. We're still in a lot, you know, contractor rules, like you know that. So my recommendation is to rock either St. Clair concrete to do the slab for our backup generator for the amount of $10,780. That's all the labor that's included for what we need to put in.
Labor, everything is included?
Part of it.
Labor and everything is included?
Very good.
Sounds good. And that's?
Paul budgeted it forward and everything?
Yes, we did. Awesome.
Act on it tomorrow? Very good. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
So the next item I have is OHA Agreement 153127, Seventh Amendment. This is mental health amendment.
So. So this is the actual cost of what some of the mental health programs, the services that they provided. So it's just kind of hanging up the cost. So it shows the true cost of the services. So there isn't any money, it's like lost, storage change, return back. It's just.
It's just moving it to the appropriate. So I don't have any further questions myself, just comment. If you'd reach out to the director and to Mr. White, is that the, anytime there's amendment with mental health, they should come present, it shouldn't be you or us presenting?
I have to reach out.
Okay. You might put out that it's that recommendation of the board of commissioners.
And if you'd like, I can even talk to Charlie a little bit about that myself. Because we've, we've had that conversation several times and, but I can maybe just put another bug in his ear and remind him.
Melanie already has. I think that'd be great.
It might be good to just kind of go and talk to him personally.
That'd be great. Appreciate that. You're good with that, Mr. Albertson?
Yep.
All right. We have special transportation, you know, for bids on buses. Go ahead, Melanie.
Yep. I sent out three bids to the local vendors in our area and I received two back. I initially thought maybe we should go with the lower line of $57,000. But I don't know a lot about buses. So Andrea's sent it to Mistress Chuan up in the metro area. And he's been doing bus purchases all his life. And he said, it's a lot better to have the bigger bus. And it's better for the ADs, security and stuff. And so I recommend going with Shetky Bus Service.
Okay, so a couple of questions. Unless we have a little bit of discussion. Whenever we go with one that costs more, we have to state in the public meeting why we would do that. But the spec sheet, did it come in two different specs? You say one's bigger than the other?
Yeah, one's longer, I believe.
So the bus room created bus sales is 22 feet and the Shetky bus is 24.
Okay, and?
And there's potential for two additional, two additional seats. Was it in the longer bus?
No, no. Well, there's potential on either bus or two additional seats.
I'm just, you know, as long, we got to stay within the spec sheet and everything if they're, as long as they both make specs and everything. And if we can justify why we're going with the more expensive one to the public, that it's the right way to go, we can do that. So. If you're recommending that and you've done the research, we can go that direction. What's the difference in the two prices?
About almost $2,000.
And that won't come out of their own funds, operating funds there?
No, I have a grant for that. You guys approved it in January, I believe, for this purchase.
Okay.
So this is all grant funded. It will come out of the funds such as a dollar, except that we manage it.
And it's a capital expenditure grant, correct?
Correct.
So it's specifically for the purpose of purchasing a bus or such?
Okay. Other questions?
And was there, you and I were talking and that there's talk about taking the walker storage out and maybe putting in two additional seats there behind the driver's seat?
Mm-hmm. There is. So this is, I'm recommending up to this email. I'm hoping I'll spend a little less. We're going to discuss the bus wrap and different options for ending the bus. They can do a half wrap, they can do a quarter wrap. A full wrap is about $7,000, which I'll still pay for out of my grant. So, you know, we've been branding our buses. So we're really pushing public transportation.
So I think we're getting out of the parameters of what the spec probably was.
Well, no, the, well, the wrap, the wrap is in the cost. They're on the sheet and that's included in the grant.
They do the wraps. But now you're negotiating different prices for the wrap, it sounds like.
So I put the top price, but Andrea doesn't really want a wrap. But I think it's important because we're trying to start stip funding for low-income folks.
Well, I guess I'm getting back to whatever Andrea or whoever wants, what was the spec and what was the bid?
Right.
And all that other stuff you guys have worked on. But as long as in the public rules, we're staying within our guidelines.
No, I think we're fine on that. Yeah, that's fine. I, just as far as discussion, I think it's good to know. You're actually thinking, as far as the wrap's concerned, you're thinking about a quarter wrap?
I'm not sure.
So, but you don't, you're not thinking you want to do a full wrap?
Well, it would save money.
Absolutely.
If we didn't do a full wrap.
Correct. Okay.
But I can do a full one. It doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Other questions?
No.
It's fine for me. All right. We'll move along. That'll be for tomorrow. Department updates. IT department. Do you have an update?
Oh, I sure do. So we're gonna start the day conference next week, I hope. So there might be an outage. So that'll be really exciting to bring our firewall up to a current year and have a new server, main server. But I'll send out a notice letting people know that, you know, after 5 o'clock, we might not have access to the servers that evening. So it'll be like the other server projects in the past where, you know, there's a few hours in the evening after work that they won't be able to use it.
How long do they think it's going to take?
Um, the total project will probably take a couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks.
But the outage, the server outage will be probably three hours. Where people won't be working.
So you probably should let the sheriff know so he can let the jail.
I'll send out a notice.
All right. Thank you.
Probably several notices, a few days ahead of time, a day ahead of time, a couple of hours ahead of time.
I always, I always get a lot of notices.
All right. Any more on the IT?
I don't think so.
Very good. Please, on the.
Mark, did you have anything?
Um, yesterday, we completed our part of the hiring of the interview process for the regional director of the OSU Extension Service, and so today, um, faculty will make the final decision on two candidates that will likely replace Billy Ray.
Okay.
Um, Pete Schrager did take that job in Malawa.
Oh, did he?
And so we need to start figuring out who we might want in that position. I'd like to try to get an ag and forest person in here.
Sure.
That does both sides. I, I mean, we're, and to stretch it to see if we can get such a person, but that's what I'm gonna recommend to OSU.
Do, do you think you will get a chance to sit on that interview panel?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask him to.
Okay.
And, um, because that's a big job, you know, with our weed management to the forest health stuff, I mean.
Yeah.
It's a very important role, and so, on that one. I guess that's basically it on the liaison stuff.
Brad, do you have anything?
Um, just, uh, they appointed the interim director for, uh, Matt Garrett's position, just to fill the time. Uh, Paul Mathers, he's retired ODOP person, so, uh, OTC done that, uh, last week. I know Paul, he'd be great interim, uh, director. So, and like I said last time, and I think it's twelfth or thirteenth of August, I'll be going to Salem, they'll be doing a, basically, I'll call it a round table with people that's applied for the director's position, which is a great opportunity. The other thing is, uh, I know, Mark, you were busy today, but, uh, James and I both were able to make it over to the Jordan Cove, uh, meeting deposition, or whatnot deposition, uh.
Yeah, the informational.
Information.
Kind of public comment session.
Public comment, yeah, thank you.
No, that's not.
Um, last week, um, there was quite a few people there, actually. I was there a little bit late, I never got there till two or two-thirty. Started at one, but there's still quite a few people there.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, I don't know how long you was able to stay.
Yeah, I think it was gonna go on till about eight o'clock that night, so I didn't stick around that long, get back at it.
Yeah.
Some of the meetings I wanted to attend.
So, anyways, uh, other than that, um, I will be off this Friday with the family reunion, so.
Okay.
So do they have start date on the project on the Jordan Cove?
They're still waiting to get approval in Jackson County. Um, they're, they're running into a little bit of an issue, I believe, with, uh, just the easements and that, um.
Yeah, there's, this is going through the FERC process, we're taking public testimony on
Yeah.
um, support or non-support, it's all part of the FERC process. Um, there's no guarantee the project's gonna happen, you know, at this point. They, out of all, before, um, the last round, uh, there was quite a bit of opposition, uh, I can't say. Pimnepa, Pim, Pimnepa, whatever.
Yeah.
They took it over, and, uh, they have, um, right at eighty or eighty-two percent of support from the landowners that are already going through and everything.
Yeah, I see some advertisements that they were, TV has provided, that's what they were doing in that part.
Yeah. Um, the, the reason why I went was and supported our fellow partnership with Clamont County, it'll impact them. Um, it doesn't come through Lake County.
No.
But, uh, the support for, uh, we were reached out by the commissioners over there to come over, and so to support a fellow county that are partnering with the SCO, SCO Act and many different names. It was a reason why I went, I believe, publicly.
Actually, Douglas County actually contacted me as well, because we got to know the Douglas County, uh, the new commissioner there. And this is going to dramatically help them because of their, their losses that they sustained during this last winter. And they're really hoping, looking forward to that, because the pipeline goes all the way through Lake County.
Yeah. I kept, I kept, and I'll be public, you got to speak for three minutes as recorded.
Yeah.
I kept mine based, basically around support of the fellow county and the taxation of or, and the jobs that are created.
Correct.
So that's, that's.
So do you know anything among some managing here?
Here locally, um, Jeff Matterneck from Red Rock, um, he is fully aware, they were doing some research on, uh, what it would take to bring it up, and it's around the minute they made a follow-up, was a reason. Same with the laydown. Worley was checking with Dave, and that's on, uh, Worley wanted to lay down site down where the, uh, railroad is, and, um, nothing's been brought forward yet, so.
How about with Cogar's property, the RV?
Cogar, the town, they've been working on that. Cogar's able to, last I knew, was able to bring up eighty-something RV sites and make them available, and he's been working on that. Um, but that's the best update I have on that.
Thank you.
That's all I have, is. Do you have anything else?
Um.
Center of battle is insane. We're not gonna touch these.
Okay. Well, the session's come to a close.
Yeah.
I got a really nice letter from Mike Eliasen at AOC, um, just kind of thanking us for all of, you know, our work and, and appreciation of getting to know us and stuff during this last session. Uh, he's, he's got some things that he's trying to get back to me about, but, um, session's come to a close this year. They got most of the budget bills done, so that was good, but a lot of those other bills died, there was, and they'll probably come back next year in the short session. But, um, I, uh, I don't really have a whole lot of updates. I will be in the office on Friday. I, uh, I forgot that Fourth of July is a holiday for us again, so. Um, not used to that, but, uh, I, uh, I'll be in the office on Friday for sure. I'll be here.
Good.
Um, just so that there's someone in the office. Then the, uh, uh, let's see, last, a couple of weeks ago, I wanted to give you an update, I haven't been able to do that. Just, I am now on the EOCCO board. Um, they put me on that board last week, or the week before. Um, very educational getting to work with Kevin Campbell and Gobi, and get to learn a little bit more about that and the mental health side of things.
Tell them what that, um.
Uh, EOCCO, Eastern Oregon Coordinated Care Organization, yeah.
There's a lot to, there's a lot to learn.
Yeah, no, and it's basically the, the entirety of Eastern Oregon, uh, the way Oregon is structured, and hopefully I'll get this right. Um, Oregon does their healthcare system a little bit better, different with Medicare and Medicaid, and it's handled through the CCOs. And it's, it's privately run through, like, Gobi and others. The EOCCO board basically has the ability to give direction to both OHA and a lot of the different health districts on how to administer those, um, healthcare, um, services. So being on the board and being the only commissioner from Eastern Oregon, um, on the board is actually extremely advantageous. And being able to bring perspective to the board.
So you're a voting member?
I am a voting member. I, uh, Charlie Quaid is not a voting member on the board, but I am a voting member on the board.
I have a one question. So when they implement CCO two point oh, will that change the makeup of EOCCO?
It may. However, they voted on this, and I actually, I voted against it because I wasn't, I'm new to it, and I really don't like some of the things with CCO two point oh. Um, particularly in the idea. This might be a little bit exaggerated, but for instance, um, in Oregon, the counties are the mental health and public health authority. And, uh, we have that responsibility, we also carry the liability. Uh, CCO two point oh, um, could potentially take that, take away the county's ability to make contracts and to contract out the services for public health and mental health, and give that entirely to OHA. However, we will still bear the liability for if those things, those contracts.
Will still be the public health authority with no authority.
Correct, correct. And so that's what I don't like, is when you take away the county's ability. Yeah, I know, see, they take away the ability of the county to make the contract and to work on those things, but they still maintain no liability of it. They leave that on the county. And so that, I mean, we're in a good shape right now, because we work with Gobi and others and stuff, and we're working with the health district. And we're in good shape. However, in other counties, like in Crook County, they experienced some other issues, they, they were having a lot of problems with their contractor. So, and, and still are. So those are things that we want to make sure that we, as counties in all of Eastern Oregon, maintain our I guess you could say, our agility in being able to work out those contracts and having that power to do so. So that's what, what makes me nervous about two point oh. However, we voted on it, we can step away at any time. We're taking it for only a year, period, but if we don't like it, the board can actually decide to go back to do what they were doing things before. And there isn't another CCO bidding for the purpose in Eastern Oregon, just so you know. That was another thing that they were concerned about. Because if you have two CCOs come into the same area, and you have a low population, you're splitting that service the, the, among two different CCOs, you end up with two CCOs that aren't making a whole lot of money. And then, and so they just, they're not making, they're not able to compete or anything, so. Um, because there's too much competition. But we don't have any other bid for Eastern Oregon. Nobody wants Eastern Oregon. So that's, there's a good thing and a bad thing about being on this side of Oregon, but, um, being on the board is extremely advantageous, being able to provide a little bit of that.
Good. Maybe in perspective, we should have a few meetings a little bit closer, like maybe.
The next meeting will be here in Lakeview.
Yeah, excellent, very well. I, I, you, you'll be working that.
They asked, they asked, so where should our next meeting be? And I raised my hand, I said, how about Lakeview, just kind of jokingly. And they looked, and they were like, ah, nobody wants to go to Lakeview, but they decided they were gonna do it in Lakeview.
Very good.
So, we will be doing the next.
Good, well, it's true.
E, EOCCO board meeting.
Well, you know.
It'll be the first time.
Whenever we can get some of those meetings here, uh, people see appreciation of all we do have and different things, so, good.
Good. So, and these are, that'll bring people from all over the organ, representation from every county, all the way to Union, Olawa, Omatella, Baker, Crook, and they're all coming here, so. The guys will be able to, to get to meet them and be part of the conversation, which I think is what our community really wants.
Very good. Be sure and let us know when that is, and we will try to touch base with you.
Okay.
Anything else?
Um, one thing, um, it's not so much an update, I have a question. I'd like the, um, decision to have the landfill superintendent's office here at the courthouse, I was kind of curious about that.
Yes, it was, uh, I'll take, I'll take blame for that. Whenever he came on, there was no place for him, he didn't have a computer or anything, he had no phone or nothing. And so, uh, we improvised, made, made that happen. Talked with Gale, uh, don't know if it'll be a long term or a short term. He needs to be able to get his feet underneath him, be able to have a place that the public can, uh, own, and plus be able to get, do his administrative work, and so. Uh, don't know if it will stay there, it's sort of a work in progress, uh, out at the tipping shed, there's an area there.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, right now, myself personally, I think it's a good team building concept for building or act with the board of commissioners and the council payable and everything, but, uh, that is one of the parts of the transition that was not thought out. Was not, uh, I thought that maybe the department that had been doing it maybe had something for a temporary plan. Was nothing there, so, is improvised, and I, with that said, thank you to Nikki and to, uh, Melanie for being able to make, or is able to function, right? Uh, I haven't given that update.
Yeah.
Apologize, I did talk to Mark a little bit, but I hadn't talked to you. Want to flip my mind?
Yeah, I hadn't heard about it until just the other day, and.
Yeah.
Um, I would, I feel it would be nice to have the, uh, when we originally hired him, it was under the idea, I got the impression that we were hiring someone that was going to be working out there at the landfill, and his office was going to be out there, and that was space, that was, that's currently still being she-proved and built in. So, I think temporarily, I think it's okay, but in the future, I think it would be nice to have it out there.
Yes, he, he's, he's a working supervisor, um, that's in transition. We've been operating the landfill since October. Um, we're just transitioning over here.
Yeah.
It will gravitate to the appropriate place. And, uh, myself, I, uh, I think department heads, the more that they interact with everybody and with the operations, the better. As long as everything else is being done, um, you know, uh, there's, uh, some pretty unique things going on, I guess you'd say.
Yeah. Well, I, I just kind of wanted to give my two cents on that, and just make sure that we were all kind of brought up to speed, because I hadn't had a chance to talk to either of you about that when I first heard.
Yeah, yeah. Apologize for not, uh, talking to, uh, I'll take full, full responsibility for that.
And just to let you know, I pretty much certainly think they, to grow, as you did.
Just now?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And so, I just want.
Okay.
That clear, but, I mean, I, I'm all game for it, but we did hire him as a working manager, we'll just see where it plays out.
Yeah, and, yeah.
And I encourage you guys to go for a ride.
I do need to go talk to him about the Freon deal, or, so.
Yeah, he's being hit with a lot right now, and a lot of different things.
Good.
Yeah.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Nothing else?
Public comment?
I just have a few quick comments. Um, as Commissioner Williams indicated, the legislative session has come to an end. Um, with that, uh, community corrections budget as well as department corrections budget was heard, and, uh, community corrections was, was not fully funded, um, uh, full funding, um, based on our Tom study that we did statewide. It was about three hundred nineteen million, they funded us about three hundred sixty-nine million. Uh, but they left the clause open that they would revisit that in the short session. It wasn't due to the lack of money, it was just due to the lack of, uh, continuity within the house, uh, within the Capitol. So they, they opted to revisit our community corrections budget during the short session, so there's a lot of work to do between how it met as far as community corrections, directors go. Brad, you and I talked to our constituents about that when we were in Salem, and, uh, I reached out to them, uh, prior to their, them voting on it this last weekend, asking for their support. Um, unfortunately, the only, um, our only Lake County constituent with some of their, that they're gonna set up, um, I would say to join the reasons, he voted, he voted in favor of full funding, unfortunately, um, it's mostly heavy Democrats on that, um, in the subcommittee, so it they were pushed on with the recommended budget of two sixty-nine.
Yeah.
So they're gonna revisit that. There was, uh, they left that open to revisit. So no more by the end of March. Um, but we have our budget, and I budgeted underneath, uh, I, we budgeted for the, uh, governor's recommended budget, uh, two fifty-nine. So we gained a little bit of traction, we'll gain some more traction from this one.
Excellent.
Um, and then also, as far as the district attorney's position goes, um, there's supposed to be an announcement today of which direction the governor's office is gonna go. Either.
Yeah, he did.
Okay, didn't know that was a question.
I thought she was going woo-hoo!
Excellent.
Yeah.
So they did make the decision?
I didn't read it all, I just read that that sounds on their watch.
Yeah.
My watch doesn't say.
Ted, Ted Mountier said it was official.
Yeah.
What Ted?
Ted Mountier said it was official. Or Martin, Ted Martin.
Ted, yeah, Ted Martin.
And so, who, who, who's the, do you have the?
Ted Martin.
Yeah, Ted will be then.
I don't know.
I haven't met him yet.
I guess I didn't even know about Ted.
Oh, wow, okay.
Last time I heard it was.
Christie. Yeah. Yeah, no, um, Ted and Christie apparently know each other, and she was pushing for Ted to take the position, because I believe she's, she was.
Somebody else, I don't know.
Oh, that's okay.
It's been a long drive.
I, I.
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
Ted said, so it's official now, just have to get out, we're running logistics, and then it doesn't run you all the way.
So I wonder how long John's gonna be sticking around. We'll have to touch base with him and find out.
I don't know if the appointment is immediate.
Or if it'll take place in a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
What about the judge? Has anyone heard anything on the judge?
That position's still open, it hasn't closed yet.
Yeah.
It's, it's ironic that it's taken so long to fill our judge position when, um, the governor indicated that residency clause, the resident residency clause, you have to be resident of the county where you. accounting where you want to be a judge for at least a year. It's ironic that she didn't want to open or mess with the Lake County Circuit Court position until the legislature had an opportunity to remove that clause, the residency clause. And I say it's ironic she didn't want to address ours because she appointed Representative Michael McClain from Bobbit who touches on northern part of the county, she pointed him to the bench in Jefferson County by May. So I'm not sure, we're not sure, a lot of people aren't sure of what her plans are with our judge position. We understand, I understand Dave Vanderburg has applied for that. I don't hear of anybody else applying for it, so we're not waiting. There's a lot of us, I'm sure that she has a certain pick in mind that she's gonna appoint here now that that residency clause has been removed.
Okay.
So that's the latest that I have heard. I think it might be some...
When does that close, do you know?
I don't.
Okay, that's fine.
All right. Anything else, come before us. We'll adjourn at eight minutes to ten.
All right, thank you.